I Hate Politics is a podcast about a human activity we love to hate. And this is the I Hate Politics candidate interview with Will Juando from Montgomery County Council at Large. I'm Sunil Dasgupta, host of I Hate Politics. Will Juando is an incumbent county council member who won his seat from a crowded field in 2018. Prior to being elected to the county council, he served in a public engagement role in the Obama White House and as an advisor to Education Secretary Arne Duncan. On the council, he has been on the progressive side of things, pushing for equity among related issues. For the interview, he chose to talk about inequality as a central problem in Montgomery County. And our conversation goes deep into what inequality means. This interview with Will Juando will not tell you everything you want to know about him, but it does show the core of his thinking. Juando has a book coming out called My Seven Fathers, where he explores race and family, he is biracial, and the influence of his mentors. On a programming note, if you are a Washington DC area nonprofit and want to make a free solicitation pitch to our audience between Thanksgiving and Christmas, please email us at ihpod@gmail.com. It's a simple voice ask. Record on your phone, say who you are, what your organization does, and how to donate, and then email the recording to us. We will vet to make sure organizations are legitimate. Music for this episode comes from Carol Levchenko, an Arlington-based singer-songwriter who is the choir director at Centerville High School in Fairfax, Virginia. Will Juando, welcome to I Hate Politics. You said you wanted to talk about inequality in the county. So let's start with what you define as the problem of inequality in Montgomery County.
One of the great things about our county is, as we all know, is just how many different types of people and communities there are. You know, we've got, you know, young, old. We've got every nationality. You can think of 150-plus languages spoken in, you know, MCPS households. And we've got four of the top 10 most diverse cities in the country. But with all that comes great challenge, right? Because we also have segregation and we also have inequality and great wealth disparities, wealth and income inequality and other types of healthcare disparities. Go down the list, criminal justice. And so the challenge when you have a big melting pot like we do is that you have to be extra vigilant about inequality. You know, you gotta care about it in any community. But here it's, you know, it becomes, you know, hey, you have to live and breathe it. You know, because if you're, if you're not watching it, the historic inequities, the systemic racism that has always been here before the founding of the country has an inertia to it that will, that will grow and exacerbate disparity. So, you know, we have some of the wealthiest, you know, we're the wealthiest county and the wealthiest state if you go by millionaires per capita, that definition of wealth. So we have the wealthiest county and the wealthiest state and the wealthiest country in the history of the world. But we have great disparity, right? And you know this, we've got, you know, more students on free and reduced lunch than DC has in their entire school system and/or Baltimore for that matter. And we've got, but we have, you know, no, no, great, great wealth. And we're large, right? 500-plus square miles, one point, almost 1.1 million people. We are a large county, so it's a significant amount, you know? Over 30%, over a third of our residents foreign-born. So, so we've got a lot going on, a lot of good things, but it just means that we have to be extra vigilant. So the inequality manifests itself in many ways in the county. But, you know, it's, it's something that we just have to really work at every single day.
Where do you see as the biggest problems of inequality in Montgomery County?
I'll start with some that we have for a long time kind of brushed under the rug, right? You know, there's a lot of problems, but if you look at inequality in the public safety and criminal justice system, we are, we are way worse than people think because it's felt so desperately, right? I've said, if you're a white person in Bethesda, you have a very different relationship with the public safety system and policing and the criminal justice system than does a black person in Burdensville, right? You have, it, it, there's, it's diametrically opposed. And, or if not opposed, different experiences. And, and for example, you know, like if you're a black person in our county, you're three times more likely to be pulled over by the police. And then you're much more likely to receive a higher number of tickets for the same violation, right? This has all been statistically bore out. If you're in Bethesda, you are seven times more likely in Bethesda to be pulled over as a black person than a white person, despite the fact that Bethesda area is 80% white. You look down at who's incarcerated, you know, 55, 50% of the people who were arrested in 2018, close to the same percentage in 2019, were black in a county where black residents make up about 20% of the population. 55% of the people who had force used against them in an interaction were black, despite representing 20% of the population. You go down the list, juveniles arrested in schools. And when you dig deeper, it, so you have this pervasive inequity. And when you look at what the arrests are for, for example, we have one of the highest low-level arrests. The vast majority of our arrests are related to low-level offenses, quality of life offenses, like, you know, disorderly contact or low-level drug possession. And so it's not even the argument that, well, we're arresting for really violent acts. That's, that's not the majority of the arrests. And so I think that's an area where, because people are able to experience it so differently, it kind of gets under the rug. And because of the tropes and the, you know, kind of racist stereotypes of, that are used to be like, you know, to dog whistle, like, you know, you don't, you don't want this coming to your community. It's made it really intractable and hard to address. Give you an example, when I got elected, I introduced, the first bill I introduced was the Law Enforcement Trust and Transparency Act. And that was partially in response to the killing of Robert White, who was unarmed black man killed in Silver Spring. He was walking in his neighborhood, a walk he had done hundreds of times. An officer who was not there on a call related to him, saw him and said he had a ripped jacket and said he looked suspicious and decided to pursue him. And that pursuit ended in Robert White being shot seven times and killed. And that case was, the officer was never charged. There were no discipline taken against the officer. And the investigation was, it was lackluster. So this bill now is, which is now law in the county, but is now law in the state. The state used it as an example, you need an independent investigation anytime an officer kills a resident. Because that, when someone is killed by the police, we want to know what happened and why, and how do we keep it from happening, right? Particularly an unarmed person walking in their neighborhood. And that bill I introduced, you know, I was sworn in December 4th, 2018. On January 15th, so just a month, a month or so later, I introduced what was the first bill of this county council. So the way we do our bills, it's, it's the number of the bill that was introduced that year and the year of the bill. So this was Bill 119, the first bill of the county council. And it was also the first criminal justice reform bill that had ever been introduced in Montgomery County Council since it's been around in the 60s, ever. So it just shows you, and we'd been under a consent decree or under with DOJ in the early 2000s. So we've had issues, but there had never been a policy at the county council to address any of these systemic issues and disparities. So it's just an example of one of the really intractable ones that we're dealing with nationwide, but that because Montgomery County is so great, we've been able to, we've swept it under the rug. And I think that is the fundamental Montgomery County problem. People have a trouble holding that we can be a great county, but that we can have issues at the same time. You have to be able to hold both those things and be comfortable with them in order to make progress on things like inequality.
Seems like America, but what else apart from public safety is on your mind?
Renter protections, you know, how the, the ability to have people live in safe, habitable, well-maintained housing that's affordable. That's a challenge everywhere. But we have vast disparities in who rents and what they're charged and where people live. You know, so, you know, we have a third of our county are renters overall, but disproportionately black and Latino residents are renters, right? And we know that they are also disproportionately paying, you know, our rent burden, which means they pay more than 30% of their income, monthly income on rent. In some cases, it's up, we're seeing now it's up to 50 or 60% of monthly income. There's very limited options of where you can be. And you really are at the mercy in a lot of ways of the market and what landlords are willing to provide. And so you see, you know, I grew up in Quebec Terrace in Long Branch. And CASA just recently, or AIM, just actually in Montgomery, just recently did a walk, walking tour through there to observe some of the really poor conditions that were present 40 years ago when I was growing up there, but that are still there. And because of the crunch on housing, you really have a lot of poor, poorly maintained housing that people are being forced to live in. And then on top of that, they're being charged way too much to live there. And there's very little protections, you know? So I introduced a bill during the pandemic that capped the increase on rents. We've had over, over 8,000 people apply for rental assistance. We've got, you know, the average award is over $10,000. That's how much people are behind. And so that's an area where we see great disparity in the quality of the housing, the upkeep, and the cost. We had a place in, over in Silver Spring called the Auden Place Apartments where that happened. It was purchased and rents were increased as high as 200% on some residents who had been there more than 15, 20 years. And what are you going to do with that? And there's no protection for that right now.
Public safety, renter protections, what else? Where else are you seeing like really enduring massive inequality?
School system, you know, something you care about a lot, right? You know, we see everything from access to after-school programming and wraparound services based on need. You know, you see inequitable distribution of highly, you know, the most experienced teachers, you know, all the stuff the Black and Brown Coalition has shown in a statistical way. You see opportunity gaps, right? And resource gaps in, in, in school services. So, and you see a pattern of segregation, right? Clustered poverty, clustered communities of color and people that, you know, where, which follows on with lower test scores related to that. And, and that is something that has been a significant issue for a long time. I went to, you know, Oakview Elementary in Long Branch, and that was an issue then. And, and, and it's an issue now. And then, and it, it hasn't really improved much. And that's something that, again, not unique to us, but because of who we are, because our school system is 72% people of color right now. You know, when I was going to school, it wasn't that. Now that's the vast majority of our students. So it's no longer kind of like a, it was, it was unacceptable then, but it's, you know, it's our school system now. So, so we have, we have a lot of work to do on those issues as well. And then the last one I'll mention, you know, that I've worked a lot on is food insecurity, which is kind of tied into health disparities because they're related. But we see very, very, you know, I set up this initiative called Food for Montgomery, where we, it's a public-private partnership. And I, we, I put in $10 million from the county and we raised over $2.5 million from the private sector over the last year to support farm-to-table and restaurants and providing, you know, food to our residents that are in need. And I don't have to tell you how, you know, how long the lines have been, how just necessary these food distributions have been. And they're concentrated in pockets. And, you know, you have people that are really, you know, not getting high-quality meals. It's one of the reasons that I've been pushed, you know, I'm really glad and we're going to try to extend this, you know, MCPS to have free meals for everybody all the time because that's a, that's a huge help to families. But yeah, that's a, that's a big issue. We had 60,000 plus that were food, getting food services and that were insecure before the pandemic. It's well over, you know, double that that have been seeking services. And again, we're, that's more than 10% of our population that's food insecure in the wealthiest county and the wealthiest state. And those are disproportionately black and brown resident and immigrant residents.
Okay. So, public safety, renter protection, school inequality and food insecurity tied with health disparities. So, okay, we will tackle those four specifically, but I want to go back to the cause problem that I think you posited at the beginning, which is, you, you seem to imply that diversity causes inequality, right? We value diversity in society, right? But diversity somehow leads to, maybe not cause, but leads to inequality in society. Why?
I don't think diversity in and of itself would have to produce inequality, but the way we have become diverse, you know, and then later, you know, kind of the, the treatment of certain types of immigrants and faiths. And, you know, the way we've come diverse, we've always put it into that caste system, which advantages some and disadvantages others. And so we all live in it now, and then we look up today. And so you get the, the modern like, well, we love diversity. And I worked hard to get what I got, but, but if you trace it back, you know, no, the, the, the system of advantage is still in place for, for some and not for others. And, and so I think in that way, that's why it's so important to put it in context and to do the racial equity training and the work that we're doing, you know, at the county and other parts, and other parts of, in the school system and other places. Because if you don't understand the context of that system of advantage and disadvantage, you're not going to have the policy prescriptions that you need now to help change that.
If you are thinking that this is a problem that goes back to the original sin of America, then we have to work towards the original sin of America. I mean, what is Montgomery County gonna do about that?
I think we've taken some steps, right? When we passed an inclusionary zoning law, right? One of the first in the nation to do it in the, in the 70s, to say that, you know, we were going to set aside and include certain levels of affordability, 12.5% has to be affordable in any new development, right off the top, right? At the time, that challenged the, the system of racial and other types of segregation that had existed in this county and the country.
Well, let me challenge you a little bit on that. I mean, do you think the MPDU system, the, that you just mentioned of 12.5% affordable housing, has it worked? Or would it have been better to have allowed upzoning across the county? This is, seems like a band-aid. The 12.5% is totally ephemeral. It's washed away by the market.
Often it's two steps forward, one step back, or sometimes it's one step forward, two steps back. But, but there have been efforts to try to change this system.
So tell me about those efforts. Tell me about your efforts. Tell me, generally what efforts? How in Montgomery County can we resolve the aftermath of the original sin?
One, we acknowledge that it's there and present, right? I think acknowledgement is key.
Do you not see acknowledgement in Montgomery County?
Not, not, not widespread, not, I think there's general, there's a general acknowledgement. There's not a specific acknowledgement.
Okay, what does a specific acknowledgement look like to you?
It looks like, you know, I had had someone in my, in my office trace back property ownership, for example, to some of the oldest families in Montgomery County. You know, like, and, and look at where it is today, right? And, and show how advantage was given to some groups and not others, you know? And, and how that translates into wealth today. And so, and to, not just to study to do that for, you know, just for educational reasons, but to say, when I'm on the Planning Housing Economic Development Committee and someone comes to me and they want to upzone their property that has been in their family for generations, and they want to build housing on it. Because of the advantage that you have been given for hundreds of years or your ancestors were given, I wanted, I think you owe, we as the county should turn a large percentage of that into affordable housing that can be used to help groups that were disadvantaged.
But how?
Well, by requiring, for example, that half of it has to be affordable, right?
So you, so you, you are proposing that 50% of all new construction be mandated by law to be affordable housing?
No, I don't think in every, I don't think you can have a general applicability to that. But there are certain properties, you know, I'll give you a very specific example. When, they're a Halpine View property in the kind of Wheaton-Trenbrook area. They, we did the Beers Mill Master Plan. It was the first master plan I worked on. And there was a property, they had 500 naturally occurring affordable units there. And they wanted to up, get it upzoned by us, to your point of zoning, so that they could build 2,500 units on the property. So go from 500 to 2,500, five times what they have there. The property was paid off and unencumbered. There was a slight, there was a sliver of land that was a county-owned two-acre, a part of this big acre, that they wanted us to give back to them so that he can put the property together continuously. And so we had some leverage. In addition to the zoning, we had some land that was connected to the deal. And I, I said that we should use that to leverage this type of proposal, like maximum affordability. We ended up going in a different direction and they're doing what's called one-to-one. They, they said they would keep the 500 units that are affordable now affordable when they build the 2,500. But I said, if you're going to 2,500, we should get a lot more than that, right? And, yeah.
What I understand of the economics of development, if you are going to ask for 50% affordable housing, you're not going to get any development. So, you know, but, but just, just as a rule, but I also want to come back to this issue of history, right? And you said that, you know, we ought to know who lived here before and who the old families were. Absolutely. But as county council, I have never heard one county council member talk about the importance of history education in this county. Everybody talks about STEM.
I think one way we've, we've scratched the surface on it is through the racial equity law and that any nonprofit partner or contractor, we're, one of the things in the law that was, is that they need to get racial equity training and that started to be provided or they started, some of them have done it on their own, which gives you history and context, right? The nature of, you've sat through racial equity trainings. Part of it is the historical context of how we are where we are today. Training our own staff and employees on that, right? That's important, who's interacting with the public. But yeah, I would agree with you. I mean, you know, it's one of the reasons I founded two nonprofits that are all about civic education. You know, the African Immigrant Caucus to help increase civic engagement in the African immigrant community. And Our Voices Matter, which was targeted in the six lowest-income census tracts in the county to help them work on, solve local problems through civic engagement. I, we don't do enough of it, and I think it is an issue.
The underlying issue there is not that they, that these problems exist, but that they persist. And you pointed out that in the school system, for example, things haven't changed since you were in school. So if they have been so persistent, what is a possible solution to the persistence of the problem? We understand the existence of the problem. I mean, that's the first step, the acknowledgement. I think in Montgomery County, you will get a significant acknowledgement of the problems. But to resolve their persistence has different roots.
Yeah, I actually don't agree that you have significant acknowledgement of the problem. Some issues like, some people think everything's fine with police and you shouldn't do one thing. A vast majority of people think that. A lot of people think that. See, again, I think there might be some general acknowledgement that there's inequality and it's bad and it's persisted and that we should do something about it. I think, I agree with you on that.
Correct. And, but it seems that when you look at the persistence of the problem and when you look at the repeated efforts, for example, MCPS has made, it's not like MCPS has not tried. From, I, I have seen reports going back to 1995, talking about the achievement in our opportunity gap. Right? So it's not as if they haven't done the reports, that they haven't, you know, looked at it. It's just that no matter what they do, it doesn't seem to work.
Yeah, well, I think it's a question of systems and scale. We have not tried to fundamentally change the systems that perpetuate the inequality. And we, and when we have a good solution, we have been tepid to scale it.
Speak to this specific. What is a program that you know, that you thought really worked, but was not scaled?
Yeah, well, I will stick to the school context, for example. For example, the, you know, the wellness centers and, or even better, the, you know, something like Excel Beyond the Bell, you know, after-school program, right? You know, I'm on the education committee and we get a report, we have 209-plus schools. We get a report of, OLO did a report on the unavailability of after-school programming in our, in certain schools. And it's the, it's Oakview, you know, the places that need it the most, but that don't have it, right? And we have programs at some places, you know, because we, we funded some over the years. And we see, you know, good results in people who are participating in those programs. And so it's really, at that point, it's a public will question. Do we, if we know something will work and is helping students, if we know that the hours from 3:00 to 6:00 are critical hours for students to be engaged in something productive, and, and if their parents are working, they're not going to be able to be with them, and we know that those programs could have a huge impact, we need to raise the funds and put the infrastructure in place to provide those programs in the communities that need them the most. And we have not done that to scale. And, and I've asked our, I've asked them to say, I want a plan. Tell me how much it's going to cost to put a high-quality after-school program in every school that needs it. And then I, it's my job to go to the voters and say, it's going to cost X. So I'm going to need to raise your property tax or this fee or whatever, or to do Y to fund that, because that's good for the entire community. And I'm willing to make that argument and to, and to take that to the voters. But the system, you know, over time, we have been unwilling to do that.
When we blame the system for something, then accountability is diffused.
Yeah, sure. I'm, I'm just saying, there hasn't been the, the political leadership to, to push, to, to take the, what is perceived as a risk. You know, you know, some people would view that, you know, they're going to take, there would be disinformation used to say that, oh, well, they're raising your taxes, so you got to get rid of everybody, right? And people are worried about that politically. And I think, I think there's a strong case to make, you know? And it's inextricably tied to our, you know, tax system and to other things. You know, the other thing I talk about inequality, structural inequality, you know, we have a local income tax, everyone pays 3.2%. You know, Daniel Snyder, my constituent in Potomac, the owner of the Washington Football Team, and you, Sunil, you, you both pay 3.2%. And your 3.2%, unless you're wealthier than I know, is a lot more of your income than Daniel's 3.2%.
Sure.
And that's just structurally unfair. It's a regressive tax, it's a flat tax. And I've asked, I asked for, I worked with one of our great delegates, Julie Polakovich Carr, to introduce a bill that would allow us to create local tax, income tax brackets. The bill passed, Larry Hogan vetoed it. They're going to override it hopefully when they come back next year. And then I will be working on an effort to create brackets and reducing taxes for the lower-income folks and, and having the higher-income folks play a higher bracket. And that, in a county as wealthy as ours, if you took the top bracket from 3.2%, which it is now, to 3.5%, just 0.3%, very small amount, you could get an extra almost $50 million a year in the budget. And that could fund some of these things that I'm talking about. So it, all this stuff is tied together, but that's a, again, I'm willing to take those stands and take those risks. But, you know, I agree with you that there has not been the political leadership in place to do things like that. In, in part because some, you know, are doing so well and like the, and benefit from the status quo, right? That's the thing about inequality is there are people benefiting from inequality. And people are comfortable. And they, they might want to give philanthropy or do something around the edges or make small incremental progress. But the big changes, you know, are going to require all of us to, to, to chip in and, and play a role. And I think that changes, people are scared of that sometimes.
Okay, so Julie Polakovich Carr's bill, I'm just a point of clarification. That'll allow you to raise the top?
No, well, the bill she, the bill she introduced would, would have allowed us to raise. It got stripped down in the political process to just being able to lower, below 3.0. Well, actually, you can raise if you're under 3.2%. Well, actually, you can raise if you're under three point two percent, which some counties are.
So you can't take Dan Snyder to the three point five. You can just lower me to one point two.
Yeah, well, the way I get around that is I'm going to, I could raise something like the recidation tax, which we control.
Okay, so let me ask you, are you running on a tax increase?
No, I'm running on making sure that we all pay our fair share to help support the community.
And if that includes a tax increase, so be it?
Yeah, if 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 we have to, I think we need a fair tax system, absolutely. I want to cut taxes for the 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 working class. And I think, just like Joe Biden is saying nationally, we want to have the people who are doing really well, we're happy you are, but to to pay their fair share and contribute to the improvement and the reduction of this inequality.
I've done a, an episode with Delegate Acevro, and we talked about police reform. And one of the things that was clear that, you know, it is very hard to move police departments to make change.
Yeah.
Do you have a plan for that?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's, we're, we're on the path, you know, we've started. As I mentioned earlier, my, my bill was the Law Force Transparency Act was the first criminal justice reform bill ever introduced. We've now passed several others. We passed a landmark use of force bill that raised the standard of when deadly force can be used from reasonable to when it's necessary as a last resort. It also banned chokeholds and shooting at moving vehicles. And, you know, you had, it created a duty to report when you see an officer committing a crime. And so we passed that. I also blessed, is about to pass a police data bill that requires additional things to be tracked, like stop and frisks and other things that aren't, just aren't currently tracked by our police.
Do you think these things will change the culture of policing? So I'm, I'm saying that because I went, I was there at the Public Safety Training Academy, and the person that apparently trains the police in diversity made a presentation to us. And that was the worst ever presentation of diversity, full of stereotypes. I mean, it's terrible. It is really not acceptable what they had.
There's a large disconnect between, you know, you, you need the right policy in place, right? But you, the the practice has to be there too. And that's, that is a function of leadership, right? You need the right leaders in place so that can implement and the policy in a, with fidelity.
So tell me how you get the practice right. What can you do to get?
You have to have the right, you have to have the right chief in place. You know, the the county executive appoints the chief, the council confirms. And
Do you think this is not the right chief? You think Chief Jones is not the right chief?
No, I, I think that we've had significant problems in, in, in his tenure and that the culture has not changed to the point that I would like to see. And, you know, but you, so you have to have that at the top. And then you have to make sure you're driving down accountability through, through every part, you know, and and so, and and we have a role too, to to be, you know, as an oversight body, to ask the right questions and make sure and keep hold the executive and and the department and and the leadership accountable. And, you know, I'm trying to do that. It's, it's, it's difficult because public safety has often been, you know, we write the check and we don't really ask a question. That has, that has largely been the relationship, you know, and changing that, we're slowly but surely, we've created some, I think, some good pressure and tension to try to change that. But it's going to be a process. You don't take a system, you know, talk about history, that for black people in particular, originated as slave patrols in the Carolinas to now the mass incarceration model. We have seven thousand, I'm sorry, seventy percent of the people incarcerated in Maryland are black, seventy percent. And we make up thirty percent of the statewide population. And we have the highest incarceration of young black men in the nation, higher than Mississippi and Louisiana and South Carolina, who were the next ones. I've been slowly rolling out my plan. I wrote an op ed in the Post where I said, you need to do three things. You need to do them all at the same time. You need to change how we recruit and train and compensate. You know, one of the things I've often said is like, if you have high standards, just like teachers, you should have high standards and high pay, right? But we need to change the front end, who we're bringing in, how we're training them, what we're asking them to do, how we're psychologically examining them, so we get the right people at the front end. You got to do that. Then you have to change what they focus on. Right now, police are focused on way too much. They're doing quality of life, they're doing traffic, they're, you know, we got them out of the schools. That was a, a, a key part. They're dealing with homelessness and mental health. We need to focus our police on violent crime, on investigating and pursuing violent criminals.
Okay, how do you square the circle of increasing police pay with defunding the police? Which is, you know,
Yeah, there'd be a smaller, more focused police force. I, I want to pay a more highly trained, appropriate guardian mentality, not warrior.
What do you think the Montgomery County Police Force should be, the number?
I, that I don't know. I think it's thirteen hundred or so now. That that would just be me shooting from the hip. But what I will say is that, you know, it needs to be, we didn't need the twenty four, we didn't need the twenty police officers in the, in the school system, right? So that was twenty off the top. We don't need police doing low level traffic enforcement. So what are the traffic numbers? We'd have to look at that and analyze that. They should just focus on DUI reckless driving, you know, the ones that cause people to die, not traffic lights or, you know, or, or, you know, you know, taillights out or things like that.
How do we get a separate system of traffic violation enforcement outside of?
It's a combination of increased electronic and and non, non law enforcement, people who do the smaller offenses, you know.
Like, so somebody with, somebody without the uniform badge or gun, is that?
Yeah, there's some, in Buffalo, they're trying it with D O T. Their transportation people are doing some of that, kind of like ticket folks, you know, the parking meter, you know, that don't do, they aren't officers. So I think we need to shrink the role and the approach, right? We don't need, like what happened with Robert White, we don't need police seeing someone with a ripped jacket and saying, I'm going to, let me see what's going on with that guy.
I have a school education question. So recently, we got the test scores in math and literacy from M C P S. And it seems that the pandemic, we took a big hit in, in, in those areas, and particularly for low income and minority students, the hit was the biggest. Okay, now, this is obviously going to light some fires, but the achievement gap and opportunity gap, as I have said before, are not new. Right, so, and we have tried everything, and and it seems that M C P S has had incredible difficulty in to, in being able to appropriately target resources and learning, right? To certain groups, such, you know, low income groups and minority groups. Superintendent McKnight said that we have to look at every student where they are. But we knew that, we've known that for twenty years.
There's some things we are doing, but there's more that we can't do. And and I think we have to, right? I think mental health supports. We know disproportionately, who was just, you know, all students were, received trauma, but there are some, you know, some students that had a lot of trauma during this last year between all the pandemic, the health pandemic, the economic, the racial justice, the murders of George Floyd, Breonna Taylor, and the like. So we're going to need to really robustly, and they've said they're going to hire fifty social workers to help with that. We have the SWAG group, the Student Wellness Action Group, which has made recommendations that Congressman Bryce and I convened on additional student wellness supports. We expect to make robust investments in that. We need more school nurses. We need a psychologist, we need more psychologists, we need more, as I mentioned, after school programs. We need more targeted wraparound services, recruiting more and training and developing our more diverse teachers of color, right? We know the power, you know, I had a fourth grade math teacher, Mr. Williams, the only black male teacher I ever had, who, to this day, I had him for nine months. He had a transformational impact on, on me as a person. How do we realize that power and assign and and grow our own teachers? Which is a national problem. But what are we doing here in our backyard to try to incentivize and 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 grow our own talent, for example?
What are we doing?
Well, I'll give you a very concrete example that we're working on. We're looking at workforce housing, like, how do you give assistance to teachers and police officers and and public safety folks to live here in the county, right? As a, as a, as a, and a, and a financial benefit to coming back and helping. That's a very tangible, you know, it's not going to solve the whole problem, but it's a tangible policy.
Well, I think that would be incredible if you were able to do that properly.
We're working on it.
Okay, all right. Will Juando, thank you for coming on I Hit Politics. Good luck in the campaign, and I'm sure I'll see you around.
Thanks, appreciate it.
That was incumbent Montgomery County Councilmember Will Juando, who is running for reelection in twenty twenty two. You can find out more about him at willjuando.com, and you can follow him on Twitter at Will Juando. Music for this episode comes from Arlington singer songwriter Kara Levchenko, who is the choir director in Centerville High School in Fairfax County, Virginia. See you next time.